All right. Couple of announcements here. One, I'd like to read, "The City of Winona is hosting a meeting to explain the details and answer questions regarding the East Central Neighborhood Revitalization Program funded by the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency and Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. These funds, $325,000, are to assist low- to moderate-income homeowners residing from Hamilton Street to Franklin Street and from Mark to Front in making home improvements. If you're interested in the program, please attend the informational meeting on Wednesday, December 20, 2017, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers on the third floor of City Hall. The City of Winona will begin accepting applicants on a first-come, first-served basis on Wednesday, January 3, 2018, beginning at 8:00 AM. Homeowners can call (457) 8250 or (457) 8231 or email nlarson@ciwinona.winona.mn.us or sign up in person at City Hall here in Room 210 here at 207 Lafayette Street. The city webpage will have more information." I also wanted to just say a thank you to the city staff that were all involved in some of the decorating. Wyndham Park, I think, looks great. City Hall, library, these are all nice things that I think are appreciated this time of year by everybody. And also, we had a closed meeting to do a performance review on our city manager just prior to this meeting, and I have a statement I need to read. "On December 4, 2017, the City Council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Steve Sarvey, city manager. In accordance with the governing law, at this city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the December 4 closed session, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Sarvey reached by the city council at the December 4 closed meeting. Conclusions: Mr. Sarvey did not request that such a meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Sarvey's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As Mayor of the City of Winona, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the December 4 closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Steve Sarvey. First, Mr. Sarvey has met expectations as city manager. Two, Mr. Sarvey continues to work to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Three, Mr. Sarvey works well with other city employees, the public, and businesses. And fourth, the city council appreciates Mr. Sarvey's service to the city and looks forward to continuing his employment relationship with Mr. Sarvey for the betterment of the Winona community. And five, council would like monthly updates on general city and department activities." And that's all there is to that statement. One other item, we are going to be moving, what's the item number?
5.7.
5.7 up to the beginning of the meeting, but first, I'll ask the city manager if he has anything.
I do, your honor. Staff is finalizing the details on a proposal from ISG for the Comprehensive Parks Plan that was approved in the 2017 budget. Once the final details are worked out, the city will enter into professional services contract and begin the planning process. We expect to complete the process by October of 2018. That's all. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
And we'll move to new business. Item 5.7 is to approve the transfer of a cable franchise for HBC. Brian Grogan, attorney at Moss and Barnett, is here to present a financial review and the draft resolution, and he has a PowerPoint for you.
Yes, I think I have a PowerPoint that should be up in just a second here.
The driver's not the wheel.
Well, we're waiting for that to come up. So, we have two franchises. Let me, by way of introduction, I've been with Brian and with Minneapolis Law Firm and Moss and Barnett. I've worked with the city, actually, now for 25 years on various cable communications issues. Years ago, I'll draft the initial HBC franchise for the city. We recently renewed that franchise in January of 2016, and now tonight, we're here to consider the transfer of that. So, we have an HBC franchise and we have a Charter Communications franchise. This only focuses on the HBC. Charter franchise is still in a negotiation for renewal, separate matter completely, so tonight, we'll focus on this issue. If we go to the next slide. So, HBC, for those who, we all think of it as HBC, is Hiawatha Broadband Communications, Inc. That is the entity that provides the voice, video, and data services to Winona residents. They are what we would call the grantee under this franchise. Again, as I mentioned, that's been renewed in January of 2016 for a 10-year term, so they have the right to do business in town through 2026. This franchise contains a provision, which is fairly typical in a cable franchise, that says no sale or transfer of HBC or of that underlying franchise can occur without the city's advance written approval. Section 9.5 of that franchise contains that requirement. It's also important to note that 9.5E of that franchise allows the city to see full reimbursement of any outside costs that you would incur to consider the qualifications of the applicant who will be assuming HBC. Next slide. The proposed applicant here is Scher's Communications, Inc., and they have an operating subsidiary called 10,000 Lakes Broadband, Inc. So, the way this transaction is going to work is this wholly-owned subsidiary, 10,000 Lakes, which is a Minnesota corporation, is going to merge into HBC, and HBC is going to be the surviving company, but they're going to be wholly owned by Scher's Communication. So, good news is, we'll still have many of the same local staff, contact people, operational folks, which you're accustomed to dealing with at HBC and that your residents and businesses are accustomed to dealing with. However, they will be owned and now controlled by Scher's Communications. So, that local ownership component, of course, is leaving. We now have Scher's taking that piece over. We have a fairly detailed financial report, I believe it is in the agenda packet, where we reviewed the qualifications of Scher's to take over this operation. Kind of up until the last minute, we were going back and forth with the question of whether you will impose a corporate guarantee as part of this transaction. Company provided us additional information late last week to clarify where the financing is coming for this transaction and the acquisition price. And based on the information that they've provided, we're comfortable giving them clean approval as it relates to their financial qualifications, and that's reflected in the resolution that's in your packet this evening. The next slide. Timeline for action on this matter, typically what happens is they provide us an application form, which occurred in this case, that was sent to the city on October 16. Under the law, we have 120 days to take action, so technically, we wouldn't have to take action until February of 2018, but HBC ensures requested of all of their local franchising authorities, take action as soon as possible so that they could try to complete the transaction in 2017. City has worked to accommodate that, and that's why it's on the agenda for consideration and approval this evening. Little bit about Scher's, they own and operate a lot of newspapers throughout the United States, also own broadband companies that provide data, video, telephone services, but HBC's acquisition will be a significant step up in their subscriber base. They generally operate in small to medium-sized markets, and you can see the list of states that they typically do business in. But this is a significant acquisition in terms of their broadband and data provision. The customers that they'll gain, both residential and business, will increase substantially as a result of this transaction. So, in conclusion, we have a resolution before you tonight. The resolution would approve, or essentially provide, a city's written approval of the proposed transaction, allowing HBC to be acquired by Scher's Communications. Technically phrased, that is a transfer of control in the resolution. As it relates to the cost reimbursement, we have discussed that directly with Scher's. We've copied your city staff on that issue, and they have given assurances that they will pay all of the costs that the city occurs, including my travel down here this evening to provide this presentation. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council?
Thank you. It was good to hear from you, and I have a couple of questions. One is, do you think that Winona residential and commercial customers will see an improvement in their service by this, as an effect of this merger?
The representations in the application suggest that the company does not have immediate plans to change anything. That could be viewed as positive or negative. No plans to immediately change rates, to change staff, to change operations, but it's not uncommon that as they assimilate this company into their corporate operations, that certainly some changes could occur. Hard for us to predict how the consumers will perceive those, whether positively or negatively. I think the focus for staff in this transaction has been to maintain a viable competitor to Charter Communications. We've been blessed with two companies to provide service here, and of course, we could buy DirecTV or any other of the upper options we have for video today. What we were focused on is making sure that this company would continue to honor the franchise and give your residents two choices at least, on a hardware company in addition to the other wireless companies they've operated with. I don't know if I fully answered your question. A little bit of it would be speculation, and I'm not positive on that.
Right. You've probably answered it as well as you can. I'd love to know the rest, but who knows?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I would just be guessing to some extent what operational changes they may make, and the applications, certainly none were spelled out. Their expectation is that HBC is doing a quality job running the system, and they hope to continue that for existing staff.
Is there a second question?
No.
Okay. George?
Is this their only Minnesota venture? I see they weren't listed up there.
Correct. This would be their first venture into Minnesota in terms of providing the voice-video data services. So, Winona, Red Wing, a host of Goodview, a host of communities that HBC currently has franchises in, this transaction would acquire all of those HBC assets.
And where's their home base at?
Scher's Communication. Well, they're not a Minnesota company. That is the 10,000 Lakes Broadband is the Minnesota company that we checked with the... Scher's is a Delaware corporation. I guess it's a fair question. I cannot answer off the top of my head.
Indiana.
It's in Indiana.
Indiana.
Thank you. Indiana.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Further discussion? Al?
Just a point of order here. I will be abstaining from voting on this motion. I am a very small minority stockholder in HBC, and I'm familiar with these terms, and in fairness and transparency, obviously, I will not vote on this motion.
Okay. George?
And then, when would all this take effect?
Before the end of the year, I believe.
As soon as the sale is completed.
My belief.
They're hoping by the end of the year.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention there.
Okay. Six in favor and one abstention. Motion carries.
Under the petition's request in communications, item 3.1 is the license agreement for portable restrooms with Darcy, Inc.
Make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2 is a license agreement for boats and bluegrass event in September of 2018.
Make a motion to approve the attached license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Just a comment. I think this is a very good event, and I thank folks who are putting this together, and now someone else is, I believe, taking it over a little bit, but with the backing of the original folks and the past vendors who have been working on that for these many years, so I'm happy to support it.
I think it's a great event, too. It certainly draws a lot of attention to Winona and brings lots of people here, so... Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3, request for utility billing reduction for Jeff Deaver at 576 East Wabashaw.
Mayor, I would so move that we... I got these figures from our Public Works Director this morning, or I'll let you speak first if you want to speak, or sorry.
Please introduce yourself and give your address, please.
I'm Victoria Deaver, and I do live in the residential of 576 East Wabashaw. I have parents reside in the East Kings, and I'm currently living at Bedevils. And I'm here to request a reduction on the utility bill. There was a mishap otherwise in basements, an area that I manage frequently, and being my apartment there, and I am familiar with keeping up on maintenance of the house, I was unaware that there was a situation in the basement where the toilet had continually run for a certain amount of time. I can't say exactly how long it was until I was notified by the city that came to my house and let me know that there was a substantial use of water usage.
Questions for Ms. Deaver? Okay. George, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes, I didn't know she was coming up there to speak, so... In regards to this utility bill reduction, which of course was a very low, from $53 up to $1,005, and I checked with Keith Nelson this morning about the sewer tax, which there's a lot of times that we go and we take the sewer tax off to bill. I would so move that we reduce this utility bill, water bill, which has a sewer charge of $411.93, and I would so move that we reduce that bill by that fee.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion by George, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five-two. Motion passes.
Item 3.4 has been withdrawn from the agenda. The bill has been taken care of.
Okay.
Item 3.5 is in the Masonic Tempo Drops update. And Lake Undershimer is here to make that presentation.
Mayor and council, the surplus property auction was held by the city for the Masonic drops and set pieces, and it ended on Wednesday, November 29, with the winning bid of $10,010 going to Shane Harshbarger of the Des Moines Consistory, which is a Scottish Rite Masonic organization. After the 7.5 percent fee, the city will receive $9,259, which will be allocated as previously directed by the council to the restoration of the retained drops. In addition, an RFQ... Why am I so nervous?
We're there.
An RFQ, RFP will go out beginning on December 9 for the restoration work for the 10 drops that are retained with an end date of proposals for January 8. We will bring the proposals back to the city council with a recommendation for approval to proceed with the restore. Restoration work is scheduled to begin after the renovation of the stage rigging is completed, tentatively slated for August of 2018. A walkthrough to bring us to the next phase of the documents for the upcoming construction phase of rigging, code upgrades, and electrical will take place tomorrow, December 5, at 10:00 AM with Miller Dunwitty and city inspectors. If there are any questions, I will know.
Yeah, all those want?
How will the sold drops be removed and transported? Is that the responsibility of the purchaser?
Correct. And they're visiting tomorrow afternoon to make their first sort of foray into seeing what that will entail for them.
Good.
Excellent news.
Yes.
That's all I have to say.
And excellent that it is going to a Masonic organization, which is wonderful, too.
Excellent.
Paul?
Repeat what's happening again tomorrow, please.
Sure. There'll be a walkthrough by Miller Dunwitty with the city inspectors to talk about the next phase of the renovation, which is separate from this sale. And in addition, later in the afternoon, the purchaser of the drops will be visiting the site to get the lay of the land and see what they will need to do to make that happen within the 10 days that they have to remove them.
And what time is the walkthrough at?
10:00 AM. Would you like to attend?
I would.
Okay. I will let them know.
Anything else?
I will forward you, I'll try to forward you an agenda of that, too.
George?
Lee, if you could just maybe give each of us a copy of the organization that bought them.
Sure.
So, I know my son is a mason, so just, he may know that group or may not.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And moving on to unfinished business, item 4.1 is the orderly annexation request for Brenner at 23862 County Road 17.
Make a motion to approve the attached orderly annexation agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.1 under new business is a 2018 Minnesota City Participation Program.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Mayor?
Lucy, you want to...
Nick.
Or Nick? Better yet? Not necessarily better.
Mayor and council. Is there a question?
Why don't you give a little summary of the program for the people that are listening?
With this program, staff will fill out the application form after January 2. We will not know the allocation that our local lenders will have for first-time homebuyers that are also low-income, moderate-income families. That will be announced in February, and last year, we received just over $433,000 for first-time homebuyers. Our local lenders were able to secure five committed loans through 2017, resulting in over $500,000 worth of loans for first-time homebuyers. Besides your confessional part of the loan, this package also helps first-time homebuyers with the down payment and closing cost assistance, which is a big part of that upfront capital to be able to purchase and have that security of home.
Okay. Any questions for Nick?
I just have a quick question. How long before those funds, the last time, how long before they were exhausted? In other words, if people are thinking about this, is it best for them to immediately, once the grant is confirmed, to start applying?
If the homeowners in the right, potential homeowners in the right spot to want to purchase? Yes. In this past year, the allocation of $433,000 was expired, I believe it was in July or August, is when I received that notification from Minnesota Housing, but they also have additional funds with the startup program for first-time homebuyers. That's why we were able to, on a local level, go over our allocation.
Okay. Good, good. This is from my neighbor, council member, just thank you.
George?
Nick, how will people be notified of this?
They'll be notified of this with public notice, press release. That's how staff has gone about it before in the past, along with, I send direct letters out to our 85 Winona realtors, along with our local lenders that are approved by Minnesota Housing to be able to write these loan packages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good program. All right. There's a motion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2, code amendments for rental housing and nuisance ordinance. I would note there are three separate ordinances, and for simplification, they should be voted on separately.
Then I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance for modification to Chapter 33A rental housing.
Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Al?
I have a question on, let's see, am I in the right section here? 33A 04 definitions on dwelling units. Does this apply, or how does this apply to the so-called mini homes, or...
Tiny homes?
Tiny homes, yes.
Tiny homes?
Yeah. How does this apply? I mean, I noticed there's a new definition that has changed from a dwelling unit, and I'm just wondering how this applies to a tiny home.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is the old man. Tiny homes are, we don't have a spot in our ordinance for tiny homes, so they would not relate to a dwelling unit. A tiny home doesn't meet the definition established by the quote, code, as a dwelling unit. So, tiny homes would not enter into this at all.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Not? Carrie's back, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Then I'd make a motion to introduce the ordinance for nuisance abatement modification.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion?
I would lower.
Questions? If there aren't any, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Motion to introduce the ordinance modifications related to maintaining the health and safety of properties. Second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
Now, when will all this go into effect?
We're working on forms and paperwork right now. We'd like to say, I'd like to say January 1, but I would say within the month of January. We'll have to work out some details on our forms and paperwork. We want to make sure that we're ready to go when we hit the streets with this.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Thank you, Greg.
And next is item 5.3, the certification of completion, final estimate, and resolution of acceptance for the Bud King Ice Arena Bid Package Number 1 for the building expansion.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.4 is the Meadows Development Agreement Extension Request by Bremer Bank for an additional four-year term.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
And item 5.5 is the Complete Streets Policy and Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached policy and plan.
Second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul.
And I believe Luke has a quick presentation.
Luke?
I do indeed. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. We're going to dive through this. It'll be nice and fast. You had the executive summary in your packets, and we went over this at pre-council meeting two weeks ago. If we jump ahead, we want to explain how we got here. Initially, city staff noticed in their 2014 Bicycle Friendly Communities application that a lot of the information that was being requested in comparison to other cities was either not available or not tracked accurately within the city of Winona. We wanted to make sure that the appropriate planning measures were in place where we could actually establish those planning measures for future bicycle and pedestrian growth and be competitive with nearby cities. Other cities like Red Wing, Wisconsin, or, sorry, Red Wing, Minnesota, La Crosse, Wisconsin, and other peer cities that have university bases like Mankato, Minnesota, are bicycle-friendly communities and are actively pursuing those goals. There are about 900 some communities in the United States, and the state of Minnesota is a national leader as the number-two bicycle-friendly state. So, as part of that effort, we wanted to focus on expanding those bicycle planning efforts that began in the 1970s here in the city of Winona and really haven't been updated in recent years. So, this is an expansion of those updates in the past, and we wanted to address growing walking and bicycling trends in the region and state. As I mentioned, Minnesota is already a leader, and we're looking to really capitalize that in the community as active living takes over as more of a national trend and is encouraged both in aging populations as well as younger populations that are assuming greater activity in the workforce and influence over local communities. In particular, I want to highlight the percentage of the bicycle to street network. In 2014, the city of Winona was designated as a bronze bicycle-friendly community with 10% of its street network. Since that time, in just three years, the average bronze has risen up to 26%. The city of Winona, if we do pursue this Complete Streets policy for approval here, we'll see that future bicycle network grow to around 49% of the total streets in the city of Winona in the span of about 30 years. So, we're pursuing the goals where we'll be a national leader in this capacity. So we're pursuing the goals where we'll be a national leader in this, in this capacity. What informed our, our policy process? The city, through the mayor, appointed a group of individuals from the community to be part of the Active Transportation Steering Committee, including council, council member Idan. And that, that group really emphasized and drove the process, including focus group meetings that were conducted with organizations such as Winona State University, Engagement Winona Ship/Winona County Active Living, making sure that we were really reaching out, as well as doing two pop-up events, community workshops and open houses, and online survey activities, which was a relative first for the planning process here in the city of Winona. That led to a substantial number of people being involved in the process, close to 400, which is very high for Winona planning activities in the past. And as you can see, Tool Design Group, who are our consultants in this project, did a survey of past organizations, and we ranked number-two, tied with Chapel Hill, North Carolina, in terms of public engagement. Moving into what this policy actually does, we want to make sure that we're formalizing the process of considering bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the, in the community. This will be housed in the engineering department, and essentially what it is, it's a framework or a lens by which we look at improvements to streets as they come up. So as a street comes forward for the, in the capital improvement program, for example, we're gonna take a look at that and say, is this part of the bicycle network? Does it need improvements? If yes, then let's pursue down to this next step. Ultimately, what that will look like is going to be a worksheet. If something is not going to be a part of the bicycle network, or if something does not need a walkway improvement for ADA accessibility, for example, then we don't necessarily need to pursue that project. So ultimately, what we're looking at is that framework or lens here in this policy. It's an internal framework. What it is not, is not competing for a specific project. It is not scoping or creating design for specific projects, and is not committing the, excuse me, is not committing the city of Winona to funding for any specific projects. So the goal here is just to make sure that we're approaching it and considering walking and bicycling improvements, not necessarily that we're gonna say, these are our projects for the next 10 years and have to commit X dollars to those projects. This is, this is the map of the proposed future bicycle network. What we saw in our community engagement was that the number-one most desirable bicycle facility was either a separated bicycle lane at sidewalk level, or a separated bicycle lane at street level with appropriate vertical separators and buffer strips. What that'll look like if, on this, is the series of green going out around the city, essentially, creating a more of a recreation loop, and also creating a safe loop where we can have families going on that specific infrastructure type, or we can have individuals who are more comfortable just biking on a shared-use path or on a separated bicycle lane. Buffered or standard bicycle lanes are something like you would see on Main Street currently, just going right along the parked cars up and into the, into the travel lane, and making sure that we actually address the intersections that are involved there as well. A bicycle boulevard, for example, would be currently on Johnson Street. Johnson Street has the sharrows down the middle, which is the bicycle symbol with the chevrons, and we're proposing actually changing that to a big boulevard symbol with a bicycle stencil and an arrow as well, to make sure that it's more designated as a shared travel space. Within the plan, as I hope that you looked at in, online, because it's 135 pages, we did not include it in your packet, we're looking at the engineering concepts and facility types. These get a lot of attention because they are new conceptual proposals for some of these areas. I wanted to highlight Fifth Street in particular, that Fifth Street and Huff Street corridor, Fifth Street going east and west, Huff Street going north and south, which implements a bike box there. It's that green box, which, if I have the pointer, it's the green box there, green box there, green box there, that allows the biker to actually go up and then move over to take a left, go straight, or take a right. It makes sure that the biker is in the field of view of the person in the, in a vehicle, and it also makes a predictable pattern by which bicyclists can be expected to perform. That improves safety both for the bicyclists, as well as for pedestrians, as it moves the stop bar further back away from the intersection, and for those driving vehicles, as it prohibits some of those conflict points that we have seen in the city of Winona, as we oftentimes abandon the striping as we enter the intersections. In particular, I also wanted to highlight the freight aspect of the complete streets policy here. What you see in the pink are truck aprons that are mountable, and then, as you see in the darker establishments here, it's a little tough to see on this projection, but you see the actual turning radii for proposed trucks as they go down Huff Street onto Second Street, or Second Street onto River View. So that, those are mountable, and then that you also have the bike box, again, to make sure that you have proper visibility with the freight, and then also a turn box to make sure that's a more accessible turn for a bicyclist. And what that would mean is as the bicyclist is coming west along Second Street, they would go across, stop there, and go down. Keep in mind, this is just a conceptual schematic here to make sure that we can show that with appropriate markings, we can actually create consistency and predictability on our streets through a complete streets process whereby we would consider whether or not a bike box is appropriate, whether or not truck aprons are appropriate, or other infrastructure improvements like that. Similarly, I wanted to highlight crosswalk marking styles. Here, we see continental marking styles. Here, in particular, crosswalk maintenance and crosswalk consistency was brought up in the public engagement, and so we wanted to highlight the fact that we have multiple options for crosswalks, but also we want to tailor the city toward moving to specific crosswalk types. Here's an example of another intersection. The plan calls for using other design guidances outside of the MUTCD, which includes NACTO, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And NACTO created, they have a substantial design guidance document around for cities. And in particular, here's a conflict point where you would see a bike lane continuing and then having to merge in with a right-hand turn, which currently we don't have appropriate pavement markings for in the city of Winona. But implementing dashed lines like that can, can help direct traffic and understand where traffic, both bicyclists and vehicles, will be going in conflict points that include things like curb extensions, so that you have those dashed lines that vehicles and bicyclists know where to appropriately merge. Here, it's in practice in Bend, Oregon. There are other policy recommendations in the document aside from just the complete streets policy and the actual plan for bicycling. We have the policy recommendations, which include improving accessibility for people with disabilities. This was considered the number-one priority among, sorry, among workshop participants. So we see this as a clear number-one priority, followed closely by updating the maintenance plan for walkways and developing a crash evaluation program for the city of Winona. The amending minimum parking regulations to include bicycle minimum parking is actually the lowest-ranked priority according to community engagement. And the next steps here would be a motion to accept and adopt the complete streets policy and pedestrian and bicycle plan from the city council if you seem fit, and then followed by education efforts and partnership opportunities with organizations like Winona Area Public Schools, Winona Health, SHIP, Winona County Active Living, et cetera, and pursuing some of these workshops, like bikeable community workshops with the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota. This policy does not address education specifically, but it does provide a jumping-off point by which education would become part of the factor. In particular, this is an example from Minneapolis, in which they put out a flyer telling people how to use a bike box, which we can generate in-house here at the city of Winona. With that, I yield myself for questions. It was longer than I thought.
We talked fast, too. Any questions? George?
Yeah, I think a lot of us are still learning how to use a roundabout, probably going into the bike box, so. Is it safe to say probably where we would see the first project with this would be on Broadway, when they, as we narrow down the lanes?
The Broadway project was actually included on the bicycle lane, sorry, on the bike plan purely because we had, we voted in favor of going for that grant. So that road diet with the curb extension improvements as were proposed for pedestrian safety would be a complete streets approach, essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So I, it sounds like some of the, some of the projects that will come up will be kind of routine, like a street needs to be, something needs to happen, and so you decide to put a, a better crosswalk on it. So it's, it's kind of not, it's not really a high-design kind of feature. Others will require some design intelligence and some, probably some points, different points of view to enter. So how will that process be, how will the public know when, when we're, we're proposing to truly change streets and configure, configure the lanes?
The way the policy is laid out is that routine maintenance, as measured by the engineering department, say they're going out to pursue patching part of a road, they're not going to be redesigning that road for bicycle configurations in that, in that scope of that project. So in that instance, though, we are proposing that individual, people who are involved in that project, would look at the walkway standards, for example, in addition to just taking a look at patching that road. So you'd say, oh, this walkway actually does need to be repainted, and that's an easy cost to add on to that project, or hopefully that project was actually considered during the sculpting of it. The larger projects, for example, Broadway, will require public input, and that will be part of the process, making sure that the public does have a say in whether or not the bike lane goes along the travel lane, or goes on the other side of parked vehicles, or, which was proposed by community engagement, of course, or whether or not we're going to put in temporary curb extensions or permanent concrete curb extensions. Those are important parts that would need to be scoped in individual projects, and we intend to involve the public as much as possible in the large-scale projects.
Good. Thank you.
Paul?
Luke, you mentioned the survey results, almost 400 people. About how many people participated on the Active Transport Committee?
There were 24 people.
24 people?
And two staff members, including Patrick Metten and city engineer Brian DeFren.
I, it would be nice, I think, to, as we move forward, to have this committee stay active as an Active Transport Committee and continue to advise staff and, and be able to network with the public. So maybe in the future, we can discuss permanent committee status for that group. And I just want to thank Luke and staff for their work on, on this, this document and the, the members of the Active Transport Committee. Thank you very much, very thorough.
Al?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the information in our pre-council meeting a while ago. I guess, the question I have of, of staff is, is if this doesn't go forward, what, what does that mean for future road decisions, designs for the city? I mean, would it be just continued the way it has been going, where bicycle lane would be added where appropriate, or something else?
Currently, the bicycle lanes and the different infrastructure types that have been used, I think you'll notice that we currently have shared bicycle and parking lanes in particular. That's kind of the existing state of things. We haven't had a plan that actually directs the use of facility types. So in my professional opinion, I would suggest that we probably would not have enough leverage to move forward in actually designing and implementing solid infrastructure types like those laid out in Chapter 8 of this plan. I also think that having a plan here opens the way for funding. There's a lot of funding opportunities, both federal and state, that can be used for new road projects, especially when they involve active transportation. It's a really big push right now, both in the planning community and the engineering community, to make sure that projects are incorporating bicycling and walking. So I think that we look at, we'd miss out on a number of opportunities for greater funding in our road projects, too.
Interesting. I, I just noted, too, on the proposal, I mean, it was a suggestion for River View Drive, for example, in our executive summary, it seems that as that road is in the planning stages going forward, you know, you've indicated some bicycle lanes in both directions, and to me, with the truck traffic and everything going forward, if you have two bicycles riding in those lanes side by side, you negate the separation of traffic and bicycles. So, I mean, to me, I'm still kind of on the fence about this.
I would like to reiterate that those are just conceptual, not actually scoped in these projects individually.
And in any individual designs, then, going forward on roads, would come to council for review and approval, or, or discussion, or nonapproval?
Correct. And there are seven clear and accountable exceptions listed in the policy as well. So whether that's funding, or whether or not it just isn't feasible based on the road width, there are engineering exceptions in that regard, and also city council exceptions that are laid out in your executive summary.
But at least it forces us to go and look at it, instead of just leave it the way it is.
Michelle?
Yeah, I was simply gonna say, this is more like a comprehensive plan for streets that says to us, we indicated this road might be ideal for this project, you'll look at it, you'll bring it back to us, and we'll say, you know, I don't think it's gonna work, or the funding isn't there, and then we decide not to do it. It's not allocating funds to the project, it's giving us options and a plan and a, an idea of what our city could look like if we include pedestrian and bike safety as part of it. So that's why I'm in favor, because it's not an actual, right now, we have a project and we have to find this money somehow to do it. It's giving us an idea of what the projects could be when we go to redo those roads. And there's no, from my perspective, there's no reason not to include a plan for the city.
It's not a mandate.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I, I think one of the things that I've heard about this is that it, you know, it really confuses motorists, that when you're talking about bike boxes and things like that, I think George indicated, you know, the issue with roundabouts for some drivers as well. I mean, to me, the educational part of this is very critical, and I don't know how you can reach everybody that uses streets to tell them about what these green things are, whatever their color going to be, if indeed bike boxes are moving forward. I've seen cyclists already in turn lanes, you know, which is fine, but I don't know about other drivers, if, if they're concerned about why this cycle is in a driving left-turn lane, for example. But I, you know, I'll support this going forward, but as long as we address individual concerns and projects as they come up, and, and really have a good sense of how this education component is moving forward.
Yeah. Paul?
Yeah, and I would agree with you there, Al. I think education is important. I mean, this evening on my way to council on my bike, I was fully lighted, three flashing red lights, reflective gear, stop, waiting at an intersection, trying to move forward. I mean, motorists need to be educated about cyclists and pedestrians, and, and that's why I think the Active Transport Committee can help move that education forward.
Okay. Good point.
Anything else? Let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.6 is the 2017 Sidewalk Replacement Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
And item 7.1 is council concerns.
Start with Paul.
Isn't that right?
I'm surprised.
I know.
Again, thanks, thanks to Luke and the Active Transport Committee for that work. Also, a note to Patrick. Again, I'm very pleased with the new trailhead. We've got some frozen soil with a soft layer up above, and it's getting kind of muddy, and, and people are slipping and sliding, so I know as we develop that, that will improve. I've been up there 12 times since the trails opened, so I'm getting my exercise. I like the signs. I'd like to see some better signage on Lake Boulevard, because people are coming around, this is from residents on West Burn Valley Road, they're coming around, and then seeing the signs at the, the well station there, going back and then not knowing where to park on Lake Boulevard. Also, the fencing that we put up has been cut by the water well, so people decided to, even though there's a fence there, to cut it and, and go through. And then there's also the rock climbing sign up at the top base has also been pulled out and damaged, just in the short time that, that those signs have been put up. So we'll have to be vigilant, but I've seen about 40 people using the new trail, and all good comments. So again, thank you very much for that. That's all.
Hey, George?
Thank you. It's hard to believe that happens in our neighborhood. Saturday evening, I was traveling east on Broadway, and as I was going past Blado's Bakery, I seen there was a group of people on the outside, and I was okay. I just happened to look over, and I, in the window, there was a Santa Claus and, and a Mrs. Claus, and they were waving. And I thought, my God, that looks like those are real figures. So I go around the block again, and I was kind of into traffic there, then I seen an elf out on the sidewalk. So I thought, I went around again, and I parked, and I got out of the truck, I went over, and I waved to Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and gave the elf a hug, and got a candy over, and I waved to Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and gave the elf a hug, and got a candy cane. And every Saturday night, from 6:00 to 9:00 until Christmas, at Blado's Bakery, there will be the elf outside handing gifts to the children, small gifts to the children, and you can see Mr. and Mrs. Claus and get a candy cane.
Cool.
Thank you.
Wish I'd known about that. Granddaughters are...
Well, I think if they would, if they would hand out some of those date cookies, I'd be over there. Nothing tonight, thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing to mention.
Gary?
Nothing.
Al?
Well, I didn't have anything, but then George brought up Blado's, and I just want to say that I took, we took our grandchildren, our three grandchildren, there last year, and it was a real, real treat. They really enjoyed it, so I'm glad you brought it up.
They did this with the Santa Claus last year?
Hmm?
They did the Santa Claus?
Yeah.
You got to get you out for Mark.
I guess.
And I was okay Saturday when I spotted this, so.
That was our next question.
And moving to the consent agenda, item, there are two items, approval of the minutes from November 20th, and the final adoption of an ordinance, Chapter 66 Right-of-Way Management, and the summary ordinance for publication.
I have a minor correction for the minutes.
Move to approve the consent agenda, and you can then ask that minute be approved on a separate motion. I guess minus the minutes.
What page?
Okay. We have a motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle, and Pam, do you want to make an amendment?
Right, right. I believe that Mayor Mark Peterson did not call the meeting to order, but George Borzowski did. You were in New Orleans.
In Winona.
She was in Winona.
I was in, I was actually in Winona that night, Winona, Mississippi. Looking for a council meeting. All right. Do we need a motion on the correction? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Gary's?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion in two seconds to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Return.